Are we good, the mics? Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Hamilton County Commission Meeting, April 27th, 2023. And we will start with introduction, those on the dais, and we'll go to my right.
Kristy Rishel, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Summerall-Dumas, Commissioner.
Good afternoon, I'm County Commissioner Denise Dreehouse.
Jeff Aluto, County Administrator.
Charlie Anis, Prosecutor's Office.
I'm Hamilton County Commission Board President, Alicia Reese. So, we will, we always start our, our meeting with silent prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So, it asks everybody to join us in silent prayer. Amen. We have some, these new chairs, and we're, I ran over my own toe, but I can't sue, we'll be suing ourselves, so. I make a motion to approve the minutes of our previous meeting.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summerall-Dumas.
Yes. I'd like to take a moment of personal privilege. Today, we lost, and it just came out, Jerry Springer. Former mayor, and many may remember and know him for his entertainment side, but I knew a different side. He was a family friend for many, many years of my family. He was down at City Hall when my father was the Chief of Staff of then Mayor Theodore M. Berry, and I was a little girl, running around at City Hall. So, he knew me for a long time, and then, in 1999, I decided I wanted to run for City Council. And while my father was very skeptical about it, having his firstborn do that, because he knows politics is tough, and he did come on board, but Jerry Springer was the first non-African-American, and he was popular and had money. And he said, "You're gonna win." And he offered to help me, he helped me get going, and sometimes, when you're young, you're just getting started, it's so hard to get someone to say okay besides your family. And Jerry Springer did that. He took me over to University of Cincinnati, he took me around, he did my first radio commercial. He told people, "She is going to win." And a lot of people said, "I would not." It wasn't easy back then to be a first-time candidate, and as three of us sit up here as elected women, back then, it was just not hard, it was not easy to be a woman and a young woman. But Jerry Springer said she's gonna win. One of the things I really liked the most, on his political side, of always championing young people. Many may not know, he championed Vote 19. In Ohio, you had to be 21, I believe, to vote back then. And he said, "No, if we can go to war and serve our country, we can vote." And so, he came with Vote 19. And that's really what led to us being able to vote at 18 in the state of Ohio. And a lot of people may not know that about him. He continued to not just get you in office and let you, you know, you're on your own. He was always available if I had to pick up the phone. He would always tell me, as a young person, that no one will remember the details, they will only remember how you handled the situation. Giving me that type of advice, and he was, you know, he was, you know, big time then, and still never too busy. He was very supportive, of course, of the Democratic Party at times, when couldn't keep the lights on. He came and wrote the check to make sure they can hire young executive directors and be able to have a salary. So, he did a lot, he meant a lot to, to my, my family. And that's the other side that we saw, without the other lights and the cameras. He gave a speech one time that really touched me. He was talking to folks, and he said that, "We don't have a choice of what conditions or who we're born to, but we have a responsibility that once we are born, that we have a world that everyone can thrive in equally." And that just touched me as a young person, and made me think how blessed I was, but that there are so many who are not. And so, we gotta work day in and day out to make sure that everybody has an equal shot at the American dream. That's the Jerry Springer that I know, and there'll be talk or what have you, but I'm here to tell you that there is no perfect people. We all, we will never be perfect, but we must get up every day and continue to try to help others. And that's what Jerry Springer did. Even my, I have a radio show now, and it's a podcast. And he had a podcast across the river, and I went over there, and I said, "Well, Jerry, you have a podcast? You know, how could I get one?" He said, "Well, the good thing about podcasts is that everybody can do one. The bad thing about podcasts is that everybody can do one." And I said, "Wow, do I got anything going?", you know, and I showed him, because I came out of radio. And he said, "Go back to radio and tie it into your podcast, because you've been in radio since college." Many people don't know, I was the producer of Lincoln Ware's talk show before it was real big, and I was his producer when they couldn't pay you. And he had this idea of a talk show, and I had to book, I said, "Man, I gotta show them, I can book the big guest." And I called Jerry Springer, and he said, "You can't get no Jerry Springer." And in walked Jerry Springer. So, he helped save me, and they, they did pay me a little something after that, that I could now be on salary at WCIN Radio. So, his, he has a daughter that had disabilities, he was really big about fighting for those who had disabilities and challenges. Meant everything to him. And so, I just want to give thoughts and prayers to his family and to a lot of people that he impacted, and he helped behind the scenes that you may or may not be familiar with. Thank you, Jerry Springer, for being a family friend and taking a risk on a young girl that nobody said could win, and to be here now, going on at the city and the state, and now the county level. And I just wanted to make sure that we took a moment. I will open it up, Vice President Dreehouse.
Yeah, thank you, I was going to mention the passing of Jerry Springer in my comments as well. Back in the day, I used to babysit for his daughter Katie. And so, I knew Jerry pretty well, I knew the family pretty well. He was kind of part of the old guard of the Democratic Party, as was I, by default, because my dad was the co-chair of the party with Bill Mallory at the time. And so, I used to babysit, he lived on the west side, on Western Hills Avenue, and I'd go over and babysit Katie, she was a wonderful kid, she's now a wonderful adult. But I remember distinctly the rides home with Jerry, because we'd have conversations, and he was hilarious. And it was so much fun. But what you realize, and you said it, was that he was a man of humor, but also a man of compassion, and a real thought leader in this community, especially when he was on the broadcast, when he was giving his commentaries after he had been in elected office, and really had a lot of thought-provoking things to share with our community to make us better, to make us think about ourselves and others differently. And I remember the time he, he was a, he was a homeless person for about, I think I did it for about a week, to try to better understand what those challenges are on the street, and what the response of others are to people in that situation. It was really quite moving, and it got a lot of coverage, because it was so moving and so different, and such an interesting approach from a person like Jerry Springer. So, I had a lot of respect for him. At the end of his broadcast, he used to say, "Take care of yourself and each other." And I think that's a good motto for all of us to live by. So, I appreciate the opportunity, I appreciate you bringing it forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My involvement with him is not as personal as the two of you, but I will say, I've known him for over 30 years, and we had nice little tidbits to say to each other. He was a great, it's a great loss, and he was a great supporter of the democratic process. And I don't mean Democrat versus Republican, but fairness. He was a man of fairness, and so, that's what I will miss most about him. So, it's a great loss for, for this county and the political system.
Thank you. My understanding is, Mr. Gene Galvin, who was a really good friend of his, contacted me before, said there will be some type of memorial, and we will have a resolution that we will present to him from the Board. And also got a chance to talk to Tim Burke, who was a very good friend. They were Xavier, they were, they were the, they were the young guns back then from Xavier University, so I'm sure Xavier will be doing something as well. Thank you so much. Now, we have a presentation of a proclamation, a very important one, dealing with reentry. And Ms. Jackson, Director Jackson, you want to come forward? This proclamation is in recognition of Reentry Week, April 20, April 23rd through the 29th. And let me begin. It states, "Whereas the Hamilton County Office of Reentry is a client-driven referral and support organization that provides coordination of care to individuals returning to the community from correctional facilities."
And whereas the Office is also a convener of thought leaders in the field of reentry.
And whereas the Hamilton County Office of Reentry partners with Hamilton County Common Pleas Court to run a reentry docket that is growing in popularity.
Whereas the Office of Reentry increases public safety, reduces recidivism, and saves taxpayer dollars.
And whereas the Office runs the One Stop Resource Center, which I believe will be held tomorrow in Madisonville, at the rec center out there, a monthly resource fair that connects reentering citizens with help for vital records, personal identification, substance abuse and mental health care, child support concerns, record expungement, housing, and more.
And whereas the Hamilton County Office of Reentry promotes help and hope for returning citizens in this community who need it most.
Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the week of April 23rd through the 29th, 2023, is Reentry Week in Hamilton County, Ohio. The Hamilton County Board of Commissioners honors the work and commitment of the Hamilton County Office of Reentry and supports efforts to help reentering citizens overcome all barriers to success. It is Reentry Week at all of Hamilton County. And before Director Trina speaks, I would ask for, if you have any comments, Vice President Dreehouse.
Yes, thank you to Trina Jackson for all of your hard work. Trina is one of the steering committee members for the Hamilton County Addiction Response Coalition, and has been since I've been here, since we've been here together. So, thank you so much for your hard work. I think it's so important that we embrace people that are reentering our community from the Justice Center, and make sure that they have the supports they need to succeed in life as they come back into the community. Your One Stop Resource Center is a fantastic event that you have every, every month. It was your brainchild, you know, you realize that people really did not have the capacity to go from here to here to here to here, to get all these different things, all the needs met, right? The housing, the license, their expungement, all the things that, that we talked about. So, I, I want to credit you for that, Trina, it was your idea. It's ongoing, you've got many partners that sit at those tables, and many people coming for those services. So, thank you for your work, and thank you for what you do for the community.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Trina Jackson, your staff is unbelievable. I have referred people there, and purposely did not say, tell them the Commissioner sent you. And everyone that I've run into or have talked to is just how consistent your staff is, how compassionate your staff. And I was, I was looking at this last item that I read, promotes help and hope. And you guys don't even know the hope and help that you've given these young men and young women, what has stopped robberies or violence or things like that, and just gave them the drive to move forward. You mentioned to me, when I said, "What can we do for you guys?", and you said, "They need housing." And successfully, our Board was able to put money toward reentry housing. And I'm waiting for the first one to either be renovated, revamped, or restored, or built. I can't wait to say, we have this long list of housing that we provided. So, I just want to thank you and your staff. It means so much, because nobody is a throwaway. And they have the ability to move forward if we give them the assistance and the hand up that they want. They don't just want people to feel sorry for them, I could go on and on. But this department is just so needed, and to think that it was your brainchild, I'm sure along with some other people. This is something that I'm really proud of as a Hamilton County Commissioner. So, thank all of you for what you do.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you, I'll just join in with that. I think the issue that the proclamation talks about for the reentry week in the entire county is amazing. I join with my colleagues in commending and complimenting your staff and all that you've done. But it also takes me back to the beginning, and I have to give some credit where credit is due. Rob Portman, who was a Senator at the time, or Congressman at the time, and Stephanie, the late, great Stephanie Tubbs Jones out of Cleveland, who was the Congresswoman. And I was just, I think, on council, just getting going. And they got passed in a bipartisan way, the Second Chance Act. It was called Second Chance before we got into reentry. And I remember, I said, "Let's have a town hall down at the Lincoln Center." And they said, "Are you crazy?" I said, "Yes, people want to get back to society." And so, anyway, we had a town hall, and they, Congressman at that time, Portman, came out. And we had, I want to just really thank all the people that showed up, because that kind of showed that we had a need. And we moved from there, we didn't have state funding back then, or county funding, and none of us were here. And I remember learning a lot through that process, when someone comes out, and why it's so difficult. You know, you have all these dreams while you're in, "I'm gonna change, I'm gonna be ready." And you come out, and they give you your brown paper bag and say, "Good luck." And by the way, you can't go back to where you lived sometimes. And then, by the way, here is money that you owe in child support, and it's due right away. Now, we're gonna take your license, now you can't drive, and it's like a ton of bricks. And so, what you're doing now with the One Stop is to say that there's a place to go, and we can walk you through these situations, and there's understanding. And so, I just think back from the time when we were afraid to say Second Chance, to now we have a reentry week. And thank you for all the work that you're doing, and I want people to know, this is a good thing to have, because it wasn't always like this. In a place where people can go, and you partner with our Sheriff McGuffey, and you partner with the Department of Corrections. And I think we first worked together on a job fair. And people said, "Nobody's gonna want a job." It was at New Prospect Baptist Church, and they were wrapped around the building and down the street. And people did get jobs, and so, I'm glad to see this institutionalized, so congratulations.
Thank you, I appreciate it, thank you. I appreciate all of the comments, thank you so much, and I appreciate your support for this population, for this community, the reentry community. Honestly, Hamilton County has one of the largest reentry offices in the state of Ohio. We have a great deal of connections, not just in our region, but, you know, throughout Ohio. And it wouldn't happen without the passion of our staff, and, you know, just the, the passion for the people that we work with. So, I thank you for supporting our office, I thank you for supporting the reentry community, and I thank you, our partners, we have a lot of partners here, we have a client here. And we really couldn't do this without, of course, you and the people that we work with, so thank you very much.
Thank you, we're gonna come around and give you your proclamation. Okay. Let's see, we'll open it up for public comments, and we have Kathy Goodwin-Williams.
Hello, hello, good afternoon. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak briefly. Just kind of wanted to talk with you today in reference to, I'm hearing a lot more frequently from city and county government, you know, trying to find a way to help the young people that we're seeing on the news every day through, and trying to curb that and curtail that through career-based education and partnering a lot of the young people with city government opportunities, as well as county opportunities for youth and programs that exist or need to be created. I'm here, because when I sit down to talk about what that looks like through my business, career pathways, I do, I'm a career pathway consultant. And when I sit down to talk with schools and organizations, and even government about what that looks like, they automatically think about the Oaks programs, Scarlet Oaks and those programs. But that is not the population of young people that I am talking about and that I work with. It is that student who does not do well or function well in a traditional high school setting. They have either dropped out, been kicked out, the door locked behind them, and they're just out in the street, and then you get the result that we see on the news every day. So, I have over 32, almost 33 years of experience working with underserved families and at-risk youth. To be quick, I won't go into a whole lot of detail. I've provided you the information about what it is and what I do in my business for Pathways to Life. Oh, and just want an opportunity for you to take a look at that, and to, actually, I am in talks with Hamilton County Juvenile Court, both judges, and trying to-
Have you wrap up, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry. I, I forgot to pay attention to the time, but if you could just take a look at that, you know, and I'd like to be able to sit down with you further to have a discussion about what this looks like and how I can-
Thank you, thank you very much, thank you for your work. And I'll ask the Administrator to coordinate, we have folks, maybe with Holly, can talk about what might be available. Our next speaker is Stefan Pryor. Did you not, did you not want to speak?
Yeah, I'm gonna speak now.
Take two minutes.
How y'all doing?
How you doing?
My name is Stefan Pryor. Jerry Springer did an interview on my father also. My father was going through hard times, and he became a cool friend with my father, Mr. Aaron the Hawk Pryor, one of the greatest fighters of all time. Back to the program now. I'm down here today to speak about the funds to help boxing youth programs. I support Buddy the Rose's Gym, Golden Glove Boxing, Mike Stafford, and the rest of the youth. And I, I support Millville, Cincinnati Boxing for Youth, Finley Street Neighborhood House, Real Deal Boxing, and Queen City Boxing, and Finley Street Boxing. That's a lot of gyms that can help use some of these funds to help deal with the youth. And that's, I got a heart in the community for the youth. You probably don't see my yard signs around, Ms. Leslie, it, it say, "Teach your son not to kill my son, I taught my son not to kill yours." I put yard signs up everywhere, Ms. Denise Dreehouse, I put over 500 yard signs. And it was, it was a great adventure to do that, I'm still continuing to do that, to support the community, and that's my job and goal. But we hope that these funds get allocated to these boxing gyms, if you got like over six of them. And they will love, help, boxing show coming up outside at the Charles Park, June the 24th. All the boxing gym will be there. Cincinnati Golden Gloves, Ms. Christina over there, Sean, Two Steel, Coach Two Steel, that coached Duke, Duke Reagan, Finley Street Neighborhood House, P. Man Jones, Frank Rose, Queen City Boxing, Real Deal Boxing, Buck, and Gary McNear. These guys need to be supported, because they've been in the game so long. I mean, so long, it, it, it'll make your head spin. So, please help these boxing gyms out, and you will see outcome in measurables, I guarantee that, okay? I'm gonna keep going, hold on, I love you.
I was about to say, I do have this, I might not be Commissioner Dumas', but I can hit this gavel too. Commissioner, yes, Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. When you say, "We're giving $111,000 today if it passed to Cincinnati Golden Gloves for Youth", and you were saying, "Give to the boxing gyms", and I'm thinking, what's the, the boxing gyms are individual gyms?
Correct.
So, if you could clarify for me, if you know, the Cincinnati Golden Gloves for Youth.
Cincinnati Golden Gloves for Youth is-
Yeah, they're here, they're-
Here today.
What's the difference? Do they coordinate?
They're different gyms, they're different gyms. They're different gyms, you got Finley Street Neighborhood House, that's another gym in the west. Okay.
But is this group coordinating, is this group coordinating all those other gyms? Or this is, that's-
Just that program, it's a different program.
That's all I need.
There's different programs.
So, it sounds like there may be a gap, that maybe we can look at some of the other individual-
Other gyms, because they have a lot of kids. One of the coaches here, too, also.
I think he's, is he filled out a form to speak to?
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, I think he's next. Tim Singleton. Welcome.
How you doing? I'm the coach of Millville, Cincinnati Boxing for Youth. I've been at Millville since 2005, working two jobs, supporting my own program. Most, twice, I've been evicted, because I paid, used my rent money to send kids to tournaments. I've, I've used to be with Buddy's Golden Gloves, the greatest tournament you have, greatest program you're gonna ever be in. I love Buddy, he's like a father figure, been knowing him all my life. I actually need help, I got 35 kids over there in my program with no funding. Most of the time, I feed them, take care of them by their shoes. Me personally, Buddy knows this, he always, he used to call me and commend me on how I used to stand on my own. I didn't even know about this, I just happened to see me on the news, saying that I was part of the Golden Gloves program, which I'm really not. I just wanted to come here and ask, ask for help, actually. Because I get tired, I'm getting kind of old, and keep working two jobs and giving my money away. I'm almost 56 years old, and I actually work two jobs and give it to the program. That's all I need to say.
Thank you for, thank you for that. You have some more questions?
I just wanted to make a comment, and so, that's great what you do, it's great what they do, but I also want to say that we look at things, we can look at things differently, and there's enough money to go around for, for everybody. The money that we're using either is out of our budget, but this is ARPA's money. There's enough money, we have to designate by 2024 and spend by 2026. So, I, there's, there's no need to think that we can give them money and other people can't get it, so.
Of course, it's a great program, it's a, it's a program worthy of the money.
But I'm trying to give you some hope.
Okay.
Okay, that's my purpose of speaking to you.
Yes, ma'am.
Because you're working two jobs to do what you're doing.
Yes, ma'am.
And the possibility is there, so, okay?
Let me just also say, we don't take that lightly, what you just said.
Yes, ma'am.
Your story, and so many other stories that we have heard and tried to help fund, you know, people out there doing it on their own-
you know, people out there doing it on their own, out of their own pockets. What I am gonna ask though, there was an RFP process, so you had to fill it out and it was a competitive process. So, you know, they had to compete against other programs.
Yeah, I had no idea this was-
Yes, that's the point, that's my point, the fact that you did not know about this. So I'm gonna ask Mr. Ludo, could you chime in on this? Could you have someone meet with him before you leave? Because you're working two jobs and you don't come, you came down here on your gas money.
He called me and told me to come down.
So maybe someone can at least talk to him today and get him connected to the right-
Certainly have somebody with him before he leaves or get a contact information and Bridget stepping in, she can, and get contact information to reach back out. I mean, you're right, Commissioner, there is an RFP process. We do our best to try to reach out to every group to make sure people know about it. We're never a hundred percent successful with that, especially in the early years of a program like the American Rescue Plan where we received, you know, a hundred million dollars, hundreds of millions of dollars from the federal government for services that as a county we've never performed. And so we're now being held to a timeframe of trying to figure out how to get this money in the hands of groups very quickly that we've never done before. So trying to figure out who's out there, who's eligible, is a challenging process. But if we've missed on some folks, we definitely want to make sure that we are finding out who that is and if there's a way to pull people into other programs that we're gonna be doing over the course of the next year or two as this program goes on, we'll certainly try to do that. So I think Bridget's right over there and she'll definitely make sure that she gets with you before you leave today, sir.
Thank you, I appreciate you.
So right at the door and Holly, who's our assistant director, is there. There may be something else. We've got other things, jobs and family services, we got a number of other things that you may be eligible for and doing. We've got small event grants, is there, I don't know where it's located, but if you've got this boxing match somewhere, that might be eligible so they can sit down with you. I just don't want them to have to take off work again, so if you guys can step out and give them a little talk, I would appreciate it. And our goal, we are working very hard, we're doing much better than we used to do, but we still got work to do, we're trying to cast a wide net and get the word out. But there are a lot of other things that might fall into what you're doing. Our mentorship program, our men's program, it may do that. We also are pushing, one of the things we're pushing, won't help you today, is a amateur youth facility that has all of this so that we can have more, more events and more competitions and bring in more revenue.
Having the show made it twenty-seven. My gym is in Millville in the middle of the-
Yeah, Millville, okay, all right. Well, to that door, right there, the two ladies at that door.
So just offered that, so because you didn't know about it, that, you know, is kind of the question here is how do we make sure that you and others know about it? So there were a number of gyms rattled off, so could we make sure that that contact information is provided for everyone so that in the future, when the RFP goes out, you all have an opportunity to be part of the process? So if you could give Holly or Bridget that information, that would be hugely helpful to all of us.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Madam Chair, just-
Yes, Commissioner Dewis.
I know we had a timeline for the RFPs to go in, but I'm thinking that, yeah, we can have a timeline, maybe it was March the thirty-first, whatever it was. And at the point, we get our RFPs in and we have five hundred thousand to spend and it only accounts for two hundred fifty thousand, then at that point, we need to reopen that particular RFP to see if we can get more people to get rid of all the money and use all the money, so.
Thank you, and I just, I appreciate you coming down here. We appreciate what you're doing, keeping our kids off the streets and doing positive, so.
Yes, ma'am.
They will, do you know the ladies, right? As you saw, okay, all right. Thank you, that's, that's the part of coming down. And this is not the only thing, I want to reiterate, this is not the only thing we do for youths. We've had, we put, we put a lot of, we have an office of youths, so we want to connect you. We have now created an office, so it's not a one-time situation. And so we want to connect you with our office of youths because there's so many other funding things that we have going on that you may be able to tap into and might not be missing a deadline. Okay? All right. Thank you, and Mr. Ludo, you'll update us on what happened with this. Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Let's see, who else we, okay. I think that's, was that it for the speakers? Anybody on Zoom? Nobody's on Zoom, okay. All right, I'll open it up to, let's see. Open up the Commissioners' comments. Vice President Dreehouse.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm gonna be brief because we've got a lot in front of us and a lot of folks in the audience. I do want to note that we had another loss in the county. Deputy Sergeant Aaron Oberlander passed away. He was a deputy over in the Justice Center. That was a recent passing, and so I just learned of it actually this morning. And so wanted to provide condolences and sympathies to his family, his wife, his kids, and the rest of his family. We are a grateful county for his service. Also, wanted to mention the Shared Services Summer Summit that took, I think that was yesterday, that took place. The Shared Services Summit is a great way for all forty-nine jurisdictions to come together and not only learn what the county has to offer by way of partnership, and it's quite a bit, but then it gives folks an opportunity to engage with one another and start to think about what jurisdictions are near them and how they can collaborate and be more efficient with their service delivery and save money in the end, in many cases. And so we started this a number of years ago, we took a hiatus during COVID and we're back with the Shared Services Summit. So it was, it was fun to be there, it was fun to see all the partners, and I'm grateful for the administration, Mark and Almond in particular, for helping put that together. And then lastly, I had the opportunity to attend the Outstanding Young Citizens Banquet out at Harvest Home Park last night. This is a banquet that recognizes students, not for academics, not for athletics, not that there's anything wrong with that, but it recognizes kids for their attitudes towards kindness and what they do for their fellow students. And it really, I sat next to a couple of young ladies from Dater High School and they were so pleased and proud to receive the award and they were getting it for being kind to one another. It was really a wonderful event. Ray Croner and his family host it every year. And so I was really grateful to be invited and to meet these kids from all over the west side who are being honored for being good kids. So I just wanted to mention that event from last night. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dewis. Thank you, Madam Chair. Also wanted to provide my condolences for the officer that has recently passed. My prayers are with him and the family and also the Sheriff Department. Just a few things, I sat in on an update for Metropolitan Sewer District just to try to find out where they are as we talk about this issue of MSD. So you'll, we'll be getting more information on that. I also sat in on the Hamilton County Land Utilization Corporation Board of Directors. They are buying lots of property, building lots of homes, trying to make sure absentee landlords take their responsibility as much as possible. And so just looking at the vision that we as a board have and try to incorporate that, I even laid on the table about those tiny homes for homeless people, that if we have a lot, that we could just do that temporarily, that already has the utilities that are on that land, that would be great to get some people off the street. They said they would take a look at that and I'm sure they will. I sat in Pro Seniors Training for four hours yesterday over at Spring Grove about managing Medicaid and what Medicaid means and some of the discrepancies that I guess you're hearing in the news. We know that Medicaid, some people are going off the rolls with Medicaid, but how to maintain your family and individuals that are on Medicaid. Also attended the Home Annual Fair Housing Opportunities Made Equal Annual Fair Housing Luncheon just a few minutes ago. It was awesome and they've done a great job, but also indicated there's lots more for us to do. And that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and I join our colleagues. We will be putting something together, we'll reach out to Sheriff McGuffey, the appropriate way for us to put something together for the passing of the officer. And I want to give my condolences as well to his family and the Sheriff Department and all, everyone who's affected. So we will get more information and get that going. Also, was at the Home Fair Housing Luncheon right before here. And certainly, as was said earlier, they have some, some things that will be coming out. They have a report on black homeownership that I'd like to have them come and present at some point. We'll have them at a staff meeting. And also a report card that they're going to be launching, which I think is gonna be critical. Also, last Thursday, I spoke at the Ohio Association of Ministers, Wives, and Widows, and that was great. They brought their convention to Blue Ash, so money came into Blue Ash and they were at the hotel, they were in Embassy Suites, so we got some hotel motel tax as well. So I was glad to be a part of that. Also, last week, they were, we're getting down to, I think, eighty-six days before the grand opening of the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame. Still doing a lot of video shooting and was really happy to make sure that our youth are included. We had the Q kids from, from the west end there, got a cute routine, it was so cute. So I got the chance to go by and the weather held so that they could do it. It was wonderful. And then also, the roller skating, one of the national, he's been everywhere on the Today Show, he's been, you've seen him with Usher, you've seen him with Pink, you've seen him, he grew up in Price Hill, so he's from here. And Dylan put together a roller skating shoot that would be a part of it, was very excited. A lot of the roller skaters that came out. And I even put my skates on for the first time since my knee surgery and I might've got a little too happy, but I did do a few moves, so I'm paying for it now. But that was just great to see. And then also, yesterday was at the fair, at the Shared Services Summit, which is really good. I want to really commend the administration that put that together, Holly and Mark and everyone that was involved. And the facility was just great out there, it was perfect. And people were excited to hear about all the great things that we're doing here in Hamilton County and how one Hamilton County is our direction and they're very pleased about that as well. So that's pretty much, my week was a little bit light. I celebrated my birthday on Tuesday and again, I'm still, I'm able to walk today, so that's good. I was dancing. People know I don't drink, but I dance, I love to dance, and my body is saying, what are you thinking? So anyway, those are my, those are mine for now. I will open it up to our administrator, Mr. Ludo.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have any comments except just to extend my sympathies and sympathies on behalf of staff to the Sheriff's Office and the friends and family of the deputy that passed. And he's in our thoughts and prayers. And as you said, Madam President, whatever we can do to help the communications with the Sheriff's Office on a resolution, we're happy to help, so. I just have one by leave piece of legislation for you. This is by leave one in your packet, Commissioners. This is Resolution J-074-23. This is an amendment to our agreement with Kerzhov Technology Corporation. This is specifically for cloud services and server capacity and data storage out at JFS. This is specifically relates to our emergency rental assistance program and mortgage assistance program over at JFS. This just adds that additional capacity to continue to be able to provide that Google platform and cloud services and extend the cloud services associated with that. So I know Laura Wolf is on the line from JFS. If there are any questions about this, we do recommend approval.
Any questions? Madam Chair, just one question. This was an amendment, what was the original contract?
What was the original contract amount? Let's see if Laura can beat me to it. The initial contract amount, I believe, let's see, the second amendment was to bring the contract to five hundred and thirteen thousand. This brings it to seven, increases it by seventeen thousand. Laura, any additional dollars in the initial agreement? I think Laura is on Zoom.
Yeah, I'm on.
Laura?
She's there, I can hear her barely.
You can hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
All right, great. Yes, I was just looking into that, folks. I'm pulling up the contract now. The total contract value is for one million, two hundred and ninety-six thousand, twenty-eight dollars and thirty-one cents. That's what this amendment will take it to that full amount.
I'm just surprised it wasn't originally in our contract for that amount of money, you know, what we're, you know. I'm gonna vote for it because we need it and it's a good company, but I just am surprised. And I don't want to have to keep adding on thousands and thousands more dollars. We have a one point nine million dollar contract.
Sure, and I think, I think part of it just relates to the experience with the team in terms of what we actually need, in terms of data storage, that type of thing. And the best way to acquire it under the contract is cost effectively as we can.
Thank you, thank you, Laura.
You're welcome, have a great day.
I'm good.
I'll make a motion to approve by leave number one.
Second. Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer James.
Yes.
No further by leaves, Commissioner.
No further by leaves. And I definitely need to add condolences to the passing of Harry Belafonte. I did not mention that, and he did a lot, came to the Freedom Center, helped with the Freedom Center and all that he's done for civil rights all over the country and as an actor, opening doors. So I wanted to highlight that.
Excuse me.
I know he was in his nineties, I believe, but I did want to highlight that as well. Okay, moving to the calendar. Mr. Engineer, Mr. Beck, item number one.
Good afternoon, just one item today. This is a resolution authorizing a purchase contract amendment to capital electric line builders for traffic signal maintenance. Our original contract amount was seventy-five thousand, we'd like to move that to two hundred and fifty thousand. We've had a number of motor vehicle accidents into our signal poles and signals cabinets so that we need, we need to up this so that we can continue maintenance on those. When we do have accidents, we do go after the insurance company, but we have to pay it upfront to get them back working immediately.
Question, when we go after the insurance company, do we usually get reimbursed? Do we win?
We do most of the time, yes.
I like us winning. Thank you. Vice President Dreehouse, anything?
I just want to say, it sounds like a troubling trend.
It is.
People are running into these, but, but yeah, I'm happy to support this.
Commissioner Dewis.
I was just wondering what pot is this coming out of?
It comes out of the Road and Bridge Funds.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve item number one.
Second. Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer James.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving to, well, a lot of people are here. Mr. Ludo?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President.
Going to the youth resiliency grants.
Yes, so actually, the first item we have on, item number two, is a subaward agreement with the University of Cincinnati for Substance Abuse Mental Health Services Administration Grant. To go into further detail is Megan Guthrie is here with us today, and then we will get formally into the resiliency grants.
Let me say this though, for those who might be tuning in for the first time, because we're so popular, they really tune in to look at us every week. These are the ARPA funds that we received, we voted to put them in pots with different subject matters, and so for people to know whatever happened to that money. So each commission meeting, as we're voting on each contract based on RFPs, they're in different areas. This will be under our substance abuse area or mental health.
So this is for, this is not ARPA funding, this is a different grant.
Oh, this is not ARPA.
The other three are-
We get so much money.
I know. The other three, the other three are all ARPA.
Okay, so we're holding up.
Yes. Sorry about that. Yeah, no problem. So this is related to one of the grants that we got for the Hamilton County Drug Treatment and Recovery Court. This is a SAMSA, federal SAMSA grant for two million dollars over the course of five years. And this resolution would be authorizing the county administrator to enter into a subaward agreement with the University of Cincinnati for data collection and analysis of our quarterly performance measures for the grant as well as evaluation services on the efficacy of drug court. So this would fund a principal investigator for that, grad student research, as well as those supplies and administrative direct costs associated with the grant. So this would be for an average of fifty-one thousand dollars per year over the course of the five-year grant, totaling the two hundred and fifty-five thousand, two hundred and nine dollars over the five-year grant.
Got you. Now, is this a partnership with Judge Sanders who's over-
Correct, yes.
-the big press conference we had over there.
Correct, yes.
Now the money is here and we're getting it out.
Yes, correct.
Okay, any questions? Vice President Dreehouse.
I just want to say, to put a finer point on it, that while we have the ARPA dollars on the agenda, Megan Guthrie is pulling in a lot of federal dollars to tackle the addiction issue in our community. And we can't say it enough, Megan, thank you-
And we can't say it enough, Megan, thank you for your work.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas?
I was going to say the same thing, that you guys have been writing some great grants. And what that does, it leaves more money in the ARPA and to other pots that we can use for other things. So congratulations for writing all those great grants that you do. That's all I have.
Okay. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve item number two.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer James.
Thank you. Love the great work. Okay, now.
Now we're on to the ARPA grants.
And everybody's here for it.
Sarah will walk us through all of these.
All right.
Well, I think everyone knows what I'm here to present on. I will be doing resolutions three through five today for the Youth Resiliency Grants. Just to give everybody a quick background, we did, we are awarding 27 in total for around $3.9 million in our youth resiliency. And that is through ARPA and our Office of Youth that we're doing those under. We've got 12 approved, doing three more today. I have 11 more on the agendas for you guys, ready to go over, and four that I've almost finalized the contracts for. In this program, it is an expansion program for ages 5 to 19 to combat social isolation due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And it's just for to help our youth in our community. So Resolution number three is with Golden Gloves for 118,000, or 111,816. They plan to expand their Golden Gloves for Youth Boxing Program. The program will serve a minimum of 100 at-risk youth at no cost to go ahead and join that program. The program offers at-risk youth the ability to do the sport of competitive amateur boxing. And with that amateur competitive boxing, they plan to hire an assistant coach to add more boxers. They want to make sure that they're mentoring these children and that they're also giving them that supervision piece and giving them that platform to be able to come after school and do something and be competitive in a sport. They also plan to purchase a van to overcome those barriers to transportation as that seems to be a massive barrier for most of our, most of our youth programs. And I can answer any questions. And we also have Marissa LaRosa Argula, probably messed that up, Director of Development here with Golden Gloves to also answer any questions or expand on the program. You can come up, Marissa.
Step into the ring. Excuse me.
Good afternoon. My name is Christina LaRosa. I'm the Executive Director of Cincinnati Golden Gloves for Youth. And we sincerely, oh, and this is my sister Marissa, who's our Development Director. But we sincerely appreciate the consideration from the county for this support. We, we've been around for almost 40 years. We're a 501(c)(3). We are a boxing gym, but we're also a full youth development program. We have about 150 active kids in the program. And they range from kids who just need physical exercise and health enhancements in their life, all the way up to kids who are nationally and internationally competitive. And these funds, as detailed, would be, enable us to continue expanding the support that we already provide to the youth and the families. Thank you.
Open up, any questions? Vice President Drehouse.
I have no questions, but I did get the chance to tour the facility. It's been about a year ago, maybe. And it's, it's a great facility. You're doing great things down the Over the Rhine community. I am familiar with it because when I was on CRC, because it's been around for so long, I've been around there that long as well. And so when I was President of CRC, we were partnering with the Golden Gloves. So thanks, thanks for what you're doing. We've got other opportunities and we will look into those, but really thankful for the work that you're doing.
Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is awesome. I mean, this is what it's all about, trying to gather as many youth as you can in a positive way. And I was just wondering, is this all they asked for?
It is.
Okay. Because I'm thinking 100 youth and all you're trying to do, and we're not trying to give away, but I'm just saying, so you know what you need at this time. And so I'm just really proud of what you guys and ladies are doing. So this is awesome. Thank you.
I'd like to say, I've been around as well. I love boxing and we mentioned the late, great Aaron Pryor Halltime. My father promoted his first professional fight, so I was a little girl walking around the ring. So I love boxing. I'm huge, you know, Muhammad Ali. So Buddy and I talked about a lot of boxing. Buddy taught me how to box. I was doing a box on a commercial and he was like, cover your face. You know, he's teaching me. But just the work that you all do and the people who've come through that program and are able to compete on the international stage is just incredible, the Golden Glove, Golden Glove program that's nationally, internationally known. And to have our kids from our communities, our neighborhood, be able to come through that program and be a part of it is incredible. When you all had reached out to me, Mike LaRosa had reached out to me about what you're trying to do in Over the Rhine and keep this going, I want to thank the administration because I, we didn't know what we had at that time, but I referred it to Jeff and Jeff's team got on it and then were able to say, hey, you can apply for, competitively apply for this grant. So I'm just so excited about it. And certainly, there's, there's others that we, we're going to be looking into. But the fact that you guys reached out and I said, wait a minute, what, what can we do? Because I really, I know I've seen people come through this program. I've seen it. And I just want to thank the administration for getting the information to you. And thank you for applying. And I'm, I'm very excited about this. So, thank you.
Can I just make a comment? I'm pretty tired of this.
Yes, you can, yes, you can, Commissioner.
But I'm thinking about the boxing element of it and you guys, you talk about how you mentor and all, just the fact that these young people have a place to go to let their anger out and their frustration. So it's so much more, I mean, a lot of people don't like boxing, I do, but it's so much more than that to be able to have them come in there in a controlled environment and then not, hopefully not go out and do some other things. So this is just wonderful. Thank you.
They were really pushing this, put down the guns, put on the boxing gloves in a structured way. And you've got to have discipline and structure. So all of those components, we're just glad we'll be able to have more youth can participate in this. So, thank you very much. Really appreciate it. We've got two more and then we'll be voting if you want to stick around for the vote.
Okay, so for Resolution number four, that is with Adopt a Class for 165,000. They are going to expand their Leveraging Career and Life Skills Mentorship Program for Youth Resiliency. The program will serve 1,800 students, ages nine to 15, that reside in qualified census tracts. And just for some background, that makes eligibility pretty easy for them with it being qualified census tracts and really kind of hits that ARPA eligibility. The students will attend monthly classroom skills trainings that focus on college and career pathways. Students will be connected with a mentor for an entire year. And they will get to experience field trips. They actually take a trip to the mentor's employment and their place of business to learn about that business, to learn about what that business can offer and give them career pathways. They tour college campuses, but then they also pull in that piece of touring local museums and having educational experiences for a well-rounded, all-around experience. Their overall goal is to better understand what Hamilton County represents in a wider scope and the industry and market and give them career avenues to be successful after high school. We have Mr. Bill Berwinkle, founder of Adopt a Class, and Evan Klinkberg, Adopt a Class Board Chair, and Sonya Foltz, who I've been working with diligently, the Executive Director, to answer any questions or expand on the program.
Welcome.
Hi. So I'm Evan Klinkenbeers, Board Chair of Adopt a Class. On behalf of the Board of Directors, our staff, and our over 2,000 volunteers, thank you so much for this incredibly, incredibly generous gift. In fact, our, led by our amazing CEO, Sonya Foltz, our staff has already identified several new companies to engage with, several new schools and districts within Hamilton County to dive into with our, our companies and our corporate partners. And so the work's not over yet, there's many more to bring into the fold. And as mentioned, over 1,800 additional students are going to have this experience to learn from different companies about their industries, what makes them unique, and present all of these new career pathways for them. So we're very excited. And personally, I, I work at Merrill Lynch and we're about to have 60 students from Norwood View Elementary roam through our offices and actually get to see our office and what we do for a living that we've been exposing them to all school year. So I'll turn it over to Sonya.
Thank you for welcoming us this afternoon and certainly for this opportunity. This will increase the number of students we serve currently at just under 7,000 students to close to 9,000 students. And that could not happen without 150 corporate and civic partners who say yes to mentorship. That means 3,000 individuals are in our program mentoring Hamilton County youth. We're in 37 schools, 28 of which are currently in Hamilton County. That will grow this fall as we add. We're very committed to bringing in more mentorship and this will allow us to do that, but it will also allow us to partner with our higher education and our county opportunities to get our students onto college campuses and out to see workforce pathways post-high school as well as deal with the, the issue of isolation that COVID created to get our students out in the community engaging from an educational but also an impactful way to just be part of. I, I've seen 1,000 students who are in fifth grade in Hamilton County go through the Cincinnati Museum Center through a generous offer to bring 1,000 of our fifth graders through this spring. And 52% of those students had never stepped inside the building. We want to change that. So we're excited. We know the funding is going to allow that and we welcome you to come along and watch with us either through mentorship or certainly us sharing updates.
Thank you.
All I want to say is, thank you for your flexibility and understanding some of the challenges with your original application process that really put limits on organizations like Adopt a Class, like Golden Gloves and other organizations. We understand how important it is to make sure that we maximize the dollars you give us to impact our community. And that's what we're all about. We're excited about the opportunity. We just met with the Cincinnati Fire Department this morning. They're going to benefit from this funding because, you know, we, we don't charge anybody for anything. We raise all our money privately because all we want to do is make sure people have an opportunity to visit and underserved youth, share with them their career experiences, and help them dream big about what they can do in their lives. So thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you all very much. Vice President Drehouse.
Yeah, thank you. I'm familiar with this program. You do great work. Thank you for being here. I'm delighted to support this. One question for you. So how many Hamilton County agencies are, have adopted a class?
Well, I'll start with the Prosecutor's Office and thank you. I'm not sure if you're on our.
His name is Charlie Anis.
He was looking in shock.
They do serve two classrooms in our program. And we have a wide variety of other departments beginning to speak to us about becoming involved in the program. And we look forward to really expanding both our county and our city partnerships.
I know you're talking to the administration, so more, more to come, I'm sure, on that front. So, but thanks for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you for all your great work.
All right. We'll go next. Thank you very much. We'll be voting in a minute and just very excited about these programs. Thank you.
Yes, I only have one more today. So Resolution number five is with the Jewish Community Center for 198,160. They will expand their Camp at the J program. This program will serve around 300 underserved children with disabilities from ages, they said kind of 5 to 19, they're going to kind of mix that with our 9 to 19 range for the ARPA moving forward. They plan to update their sensory room, add some staff and equipment that is definitely needed with those children with disabilities to make sure that they serve them adequately. And then they're going to train staff on the mental health first aid. We've talked a little bit about the mental health first aid as well with our teen suicide prevention grants and how that, that really helps students with isolation and really helps people combat that isolation. They will increase their financial assistance program that they currently have by an additional 30% to remove financial barriers so more people can actually participate at no cost or low cost. Camp at the J's goal is to fulfill that gap that is usually 17 to 34%. And by that gap, it's a knowledge gap, as they call it, over summer break where kids are in between school years. So they want to make sure that they're bridging that gap by invoking STEM, art, socialization, mental health strategies, and physical activity. And theirs is a little bit more unique than other summer camps because theirs goes into August and is closer to when school actually goes back into session. So there's a little bit less of a gap there in between the school years. And then their ultimate goal is that at least 50% of the children have decreased feelings of isolation, made at least one friend, which we always know is important, learn a new skill, and have increased happiness overall. And we have two attendees here with us today to expand more on the program. Lauren Samunas, Director of Camp and Extended Care, and Holly Wolfson, Chief Programming Officer.
Welcome.
Hi. Thank you so much for this amazing opportunity. We are extremely excited to be here. So really with the money that we would be receiving, our main goal is to help as many kids get to camp and be successful. So we do serve over really, we'll, we'll serve over 300 kids over the next two years. It's just, we're separating the grant hopefully between the two years to be able to hire more high-quality staff to work with kids who need some accommodations to be successful and so they can be mainstreamed with the other, with other kids. Also, having a social worker on staff to help with mental health crises and also a social emotional dog to be available for when someone needs a break and just some extra support. Also enhancing our sensory room and then also the financial aid barrier, giving them, giving some more support and financial opportunities for families who really need childcare and want their kids outside and being successful over the summer without feeling the stress of the money aspect. But like I said, we're very thankful for the opportunity and we're really excited to be here and thank you so much. I don't know, do you want to say anything else?
I'm Holly Wolfson, the Chief Program Officer at the JCC. I think Lauren did a great job of summarizing, but I want to again say thank you for the support. It's going to allow us to accommodate more children. Last summer, we gave away twice the amount of financial aid that we had budgeted. We only see that need increasing as I think the stress of the pandemic has continued to put stress on our families and particularly in employment and in their finances. We are one of the only camps that opened in the summer of 2020. We met a need for families that needed to go to work but to give their children a safe space to grow and learn over the summer. In 2021, we saw an incredible spike of kids and in that we include the counselors that needed additional emotional and mental health support. I think that the stress and the isolation of the pandemic really impacted the kids a lot. So we brought in some extra support last summer, but this summer we envision needing even more. So these additional dollars will really allow us to provide the kids with that additional support and the additional funding so families who are struggling financially can bring our kids to camp. So thank you. Really, it means so much and it's really impacting the lives of these kids. So thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Drehouse.
Thank you. Thank you for the work that you're doing, especially the focus on kids with disabilities. It's really important to our community. So thanks for everything.
Commissioner Dumas?
Ditto, ditto. Sorry.
I just want to thank you as well for working with our children with disabilities, but also the part where you talk about families who are still hitting, hitting the stress points from COVID financially and camps are just really tough. And so to have kids and organize activities instead of just staying around with idle minds is critical. So thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That finance wise is mine for today.
Okay, great. Just wanted to say that this board, as we look at COVID and we diversified our funds and we were doing affordable housing to mental health to a number of things, but we thought that youth is the best investment we can make. And, but how do you do that? We said, let's invest in programs that's already out here helping young people and they help more. And at a time when we're hearing so much negativity in terms of our youth and violence that's out there, my philosophy has always been and how I live is. that's out there, um, my philosophy has always been and how I live is that we must get our program to our youth before the street program gets to them. And, um, you know, I know they say you can't save everybody, but we can sure enough try. And so I think that this investment that we're doing with these organizations, and I want to say, I know there were some we have today, but we've had some others prior to, want to thank the administration. I think you've done a great job of, uh, first of all, there's so many people out here with programs that's helping our young people. And I think that's a major focus, uh, that we have so many folks that are rolling up their sleeves, putting in their own money, raising private money, uh, just trying to help our youth. And, um, it gave us a chance to see some of the diversity of folks in terms of different types of programs that are out here that just need help. And I think today I'm telling you, you're not alone, uh, that we're in partnership with you. And so when you look at everything from what you call green youth, uh, resiliency, we've got camps, uh, cause we're coming into the summer and I'm telling you, these camps are very expensive. And, uh, you have a choice, can the kids stay at home or continue learning through the summer. So the camps, we've got, uh, everything from, you know, uh, tech services, Step Up to Success, uh, block youth, uh, service expansions and, you know, what they're doing over in Price Hill, uh, with block ministries to the Ensemble Theater. Uh, we even had, um, uh, we've got a, um, bridging the gap component. We have, of course, Golden Gloves. So we go from camps to arts to sports, uh, all kinds of classes and opportunities, uh, the orchestra. We got a program, even if you have never played an instrument, you can come on as is. They teach you how to play and you leave with an instrument. Uh, we don't know who we're, who's going to be the next person that might get exposed to this and go on and lead the symphony in Cincinnati and abroad. Uh, we've got college readiness. I want more of our kids being able to get these scholarships and go to school. So we got college readiness stuff that we've done. We've got mentoring, as you said, adopt a class at a young age, be able to come in and see, uh, folks that are doing positive things and get them looking and say, man, I might want to do that. Uh, this is just, uh, amazing, uh, with the different types of folks that we are giving options to and supporting. Um, and I just want to commend the administration and commend you, uh, for looking at all of these and coming up with some things that are different that we've never, uh, we've never seen or may not know about. So, um, I'm excited about it. You know, almost $4 million that we have put in on the ground. Uh, there's no startup. These folks are ready to go and it couples with, uh, millions that we spend through our jobs and family services, our block grants and other things. And now we have an umbrella called the Office of Youth that will be able to come in and report back in a year. Uh, I've asked Mr. Ludo about this, reporting back in a year, the Office of Youth, what did you do? How did you help? What did we spend? Uh, we've got other programs, uh, Commissioner Dooley's, uh, put forward, uh, that we supported a grant program that helps, uh, parents who can't afford it can take their kids to events so that, oh, you don't have to be of a certain class to see events and see what's going on, uh, here in, in our, uh, county. And then we've got other grants for programs for youth, nonprofits, you know, dance teams and those kind of things. So we're doing a lot, but now we're going to have an umbrella to be able to have a report card, if you will, on all the things we've done. How many people have we helped and how have we impacted, uh, our future? So I want to open it up to, uh, Vice President Dree House, the Commissioner, uh, Dooley's, and then we will take a vote. Vice President Dree House.
Now, I just once again want to recognize that, uh, our folks at the federal level, our partners have made this possible here at the local level. And I think that our meetings in the future are going to be very dry, uh, when the, the money is gone and, uh, we have to just go through our regular business. So it's been a real pleasure to meet all of the folks that have come in advocating for these funds. It's, it's a great eye-opener for all of us to know the good work that's going on throughout the county. And thanks to you, Sarah.
Thank you guys for letting me always present and I agree, bring everyone and it's great because I meet everyone via email for months and months and months. So actually getting to put faces and meeting them and they have all been so welcoming and bringing us out, seeing what they're doing. So it's going to be really, a really fun program to organize and run.
Yes, and we do thank the Biden administration and we, that these videos are showing up in Washington and tell them, get the money here and we'll get it to the people. Maybe, maybe some more money might come up, come about. Commissioner Dooley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, this, all of these, uh, grants and allocations fulfills.
Fulfills our vision as a board. So I'm just very humbled to be a part of being able to allocate these monies. Gotcha. And, um, Mr. Ludo, can I also ask that we maybe send something formalized to Washington? I'd like to see some of the folks get out of Washington and maybe come here. Secretary of HUD, uh, different folks to see what we're doing, maybe could visit some of these programs, uh, and show, uh, what we're doing. Cause I know they're looking at more ways to, uh, curb youth violence and, uh, help and support youth, uh, you know, everybody from the president on down. Let's invite them to see how Hamilton County has done. I know we were all three in Washington and we found out that, you know, our county is doing a lot more than a lot of counties around the country. So I want to invite them to come and see what we're doing here and the great programs that folks from Hamilton County are doing. So, thank you. I would like to make a motion to approve items number three through five.
Second?
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dree House.
Yes.
Commissioner Dooley.
Yes.
Thanks, ladies.
Thank you all. Now you're welcome to stay. We have the most exciting meetings you ever want to see, but if you have to go, we understand. Thank you all for being here. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we'll go to the consent agenda. Mr. Ludo, you'll walk us through the ones with the money.
Uh, we, and we have a pretty short, uh, agenda here to consent agenda here today. Um, so item number six is a, an agreement, uh, between the county and the General Health District for the operation of the tuberculosis control services, uh, between, uh, May of 23 and December of 27. Uh, we have a, uh, ITB 001-23 for waterproofing and concrete, uh, repair at the Great American Ballpark for $204,413. We have an agreement between Anderson Township Park District, uh, and the board. Uh, this is for $385,000, $382, $385,000, $382. Uh, this is of revenue, uh, to the county. This is over two years plus a renewal for, uh, Sheriff Patrol Services, uh, in the Anderson Township, uh, Park District. Uh, then, uh, Commissioners, we have, uh, items nine through, uh, 15, which are JFS agreements. There are three here for foster care services, uh, two for residential treatment, uh, two for group home services. All of these are based in Ohio. Uh, and then item number 16, we have a travel item requesting authorization, uh, for, um, the engineer, uh, 13 employees going all the way to Hamilton, Ohio.
Thank you. Uh, I had a, on item number seven, just had one question. Cause I, I don't remember the lease agreement. So we just do all the repairs. I know we do all the repairs at, uh, the stadium, the football, NFL stadium.
We have a certain level of capital that we do at Great American Ballpark as well. It's not nearly as much as we do at, at the stadium though.
Gotcha. Okay. All right. Any questions? Vice President Dree House. Any questions, comments? Commissioner Dooley?
Yes, Madam Chair. Just wanted to make a quick comment about items nine through 15 for the JFS placement. And so I just heard Jeff say, all are based in Ohio. That's a big deal. Cause when I first came, I heard Michigan, West Virginia, wherever else. And so we were, um, um, just purposeful in the fact that we wanted our babies to stay here in this area, if at all possible. So to hear Jeff say that is just, just a great thing. I know it can always happen, but it is a big deal. Thank you.
All right. Uh, I make a motion, uh, to approve and receive for the record, items number six through 16.
Second?
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dree House. Commissioner Summer Dooley.
Yes. Okay, um, just one thing we want to remind people, if you're a small business, we have Small Business Day on May 22nd. I thought I'd bring it up. I'll try to announce it each meeting so that, you know, no one says, I didn't know about it. We'll do our best. But May 22nd, uh, it's going to be at the Sharonville Convention Center. Uh, we do have, uh, I think 700 people already RSPD, but we want to get it out there and wanted to let people know, May 22nd and, uh, I think it starts at nine o'clock. But, uh, you can go to our website. I would encourage everybody, go to our website because we have a lot of things posted on that website. So, uh, that's all I have. Anything else, uh, Commissioners? Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dree House. Commissioner Summer Dooley.
Yes.